Islamic microfinance is becoming an increasingly popular mechanism for poverty alleviation, especially for developing countries around the world. This microfinance service adheres to the principles of Islam as a form of social responsibility. Yona Islamic microfinance is the Islamic microfinance of choice in the Gambia, trustworthy and reliable. At Yona Islamic microfinance, we provide savings products, current accounts, financing products in conformity with Islam. In addition, Yona Islamic microfinance also offers local and international remittances, Takaful Fund, management of Zakat, management of Awkaaf, trading and investment, and building of strategic partnerships to bring financial services to the doorstep of the poor with donor projects, madrasas, youth organizations, women groups, and farmer organizations. Make a choice with Yona Islamic microfinance today. For more information on Yona Islamic microfinance, call 377 2151 or 9832151, or visit Yona head office at Tepa Garage, Bakwate, or visit any Yona branch located countrywide near you.
I want to say thank you for your presence here today and first to thank Lord Mayoress, Ms. Rohim Maliklo, for gracing the event, and our resident coordinator, Ms. Isata Day, and all our partners and colleagues who are able to make it to this event today to celebrate with us the launching of the Smart Cities, the kiosks and QR codes for tax revenue collection. So this is a milestone and this is a great achievement when we come to digital transformation. The idea is digital transformation, and these are small strides. Small it may seem, but big as well because we are starting from somewhere, one step at a time. But I just want to say I'll be the emcee for today and we'll just make it quick because time is already gone and apologies for that. So I'll just call on my colleague, our team lead Omar Janh to come and give the project introduction.
What we do in the Accelerator Lab is to try to do development differently. So that may sound a bit confusing, how do you do development differently? But we have to attempt in any way we can because of the challenges we are facing in this day and age. So one of them is how do we make our cities smarter? We understand that we have an overwhelming percentage of people moving into cities and so we need to understand how our cities are reacting to the large numbers coming there, how our water systems are doing, our energy systems, our usage, and things of that nature. So in a nutshell, in 2019, when the Accelerator Lab started, we were selected as one of four countries in Africa to implement a smart cities pilot project. The Gambia, of course, being a small country, we decided to work with BCC, knowing that Banjul is our capital city, of course. And so what we did is we talked with the council, designed a partnership agreement with them, and worked to try to get three areas that we can intervene in. The first required us to do a study, so we added to that partnership by working with UTG. And the University of the Gambia came and had an assessment across the entire market, talking to the stall owners, the boutique owners, the hawkers, literally everyone in the market. And what we were able to find out is the main challenge was stall identification and registration. So we confirmed with BCC that this was the case and our first intervention, when I list them, tries to address this challenge. The second one was the collection of rates and payments. Sometimes there were delays, sometimes the vendors had various reasons why they could not. So we knew that that was the second key highlight. Then the third one was how information is shared and managed. So these are the three key areas that we tried to address. And our interventions today, we'll have a chance to look at a demo and a tour of them. One is to use what's called QR codes. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar, it's those black and white images that once you scan it, it will give you information about a particular service, product, or information. So what it does for you as a vendor is give you information about your boutique, when you last paid, and basically your business details. So that was how we addressed the first challenge. The second challenge was something regarding the payments. So now when you scan the QR codes, there was an issue of maybe the money might be ripped or you don't have exact change or various reasons you can imagine. So we had basically a handheld device that looks very much like a scanner and that is kind of what you can now use, scan the QR code and all the details will come up about when you last paid, whether you are current or whether you are behind. But also the council, so the mayor and her team can just go into a dashboard and see everything that is happening in real time. So that's another dynamic about cities, they have to be able to communicate in real time. Third and finally, we also set up, I think this will be the one that excites most people, a digital information system, so in short, we are calling it a kiosk. You've seen maybe three or so across the market. One is at the outside BCC and we know that BCC will be moving to a new building, so it's close to that venue on the left side of Independence Drive. The second one is here at Makati Square, where you probably passed by coming to this event this morning. And the third and final one is at the south entrance near the GRA headquarters. What this will do is it will allow the BCC to enable itself to get more diversified revenue. So it will be able to collect money from maybe other government agencies or institutions that wish to advertise, for example Destination Gambia. For example, you as a business person may want to advertise a service or the council may wish to communicate that we have new boutiques opening up in a new zone that people need to know about. So in a nutshell, that's how we address this information issue. So today, we are going to keep it brief. Our idea is to just showcase what we have been doing, talk a little bit about the Accelerator Lab, and have, of course, our representatives from the two institutions share with us how they feel about this endeavor. So later on, we will also highlight the partners that we work with to make it possible. So I'll keep it brief here and we urge you to follow along. You can use hashtag AklabGM to tag or tweet any photos that you have and we welcome you again to this brief event this morning. So with that, I'll hand back to the emcee, thank you for your attention.
Dear attendees and dear Lord Mayor, dear member of the Banjul City Council, representative of the youth movement, of the different organizations, civil society organization, but also the market actors who are hosting us today because we even, you know, we are using their space and this is an important event in the sense that when we are talking about digitalization as a way forward after what we went through during the pandemic, this first action is making it a reality. It's indeed a pride for us that the Gambia has been selected as one of the four pilot countries for 2020 Smart Cities project, which is initiated, has been initiated in Singapore two years ago. Since we started this initiative, your Lord Mayor has been very proactive and engaged and this is one of many partnerships between UNDP and the municipality of Banjul that we are proud of and we know that through the municipality we can reach out to more people but also to really get closer to the people in terms of their daily activities, especially when it comes to economic activities. I would like to recall that this, as Omar just said, and we thank him for all his commitment as well for having led this program with the whole Accelerator team and the colleagues who have been working closely. It has been an achievement in terms of implementing these actions with, together with the university but also as the UN agencies like UNOPS and to make sure that local enterprise and media analytics have been also engaged in this process. I would like to express our UNDP particular interest, commitment, and support to the Gambia digitalization evolution through this remarkable action in having tools that the market users can implement and not only to gain time but to facilitate their transactions on a daily basis. UNDP's private pilot to digitalization by default is a programmatic operations through its new digital strategy 2020-2025, which showcase our commitment to compete in a smarter, faster, and more interconnected world through greater inclusivity and equity that ensure to leave no one behind. We are encouraging the council to embrace this partnership by promoting informational sharing and digital advertising. We are also offering the information management system as a way to just, by getting closer to the market vendors but also to visitors. It's a tool that can help really to reinforce the interaction between the visitors and the vendors in the market. It's also an opportunity to encourage the Gambia destination that deserves to continuously be promoted. We know that Gambia is already a great destination but we know how the COVID has impacted, especially the tourism area. So this is through digitalization, we can also continue to reach out to people for them to continue to come to the Gambia for all we know that the Gambia can offer as a smiling coast of Africa. Dear sister and Lord Mayor, we would like to really applaud the effort of your city council to transform the city of Banjul over the past five or six years with better road infrastructure, better light street, power, and more economically friendly energies, a healthier shoreline, build resilience, and of course, the digital efforts to make sure that the street addresses are known and even the monitoring of the ferry system as well. We commend you and your team and we just reiterate that this is one of the milestones in our partnership because we know we are working also through the South South Corporation, UN, to support the youth volunteerism. So we are very proud and I'm particularly proud because you know why? We are very close in reinforcing women's empowerment and to becoming a model but to make sure that what the Gambia is doing now and shining is also reaching out to all the sectors, including especially at the economic level because it's true economic and trade that also people can strive, especially in this very complicated context related to the COVID recovery but also to the global economy in general. We would like to congratulate all the market traders that have been very cooperative in this process. The University of the Gambia, I think it's important to also bring close the university of the Gambia for the leaders who will coming from this university to at the early stage be in contact with the reality of the population and especially when it comes to trade and market users. We would like to tell all Banjulians and Gambians that this system is for you, all the systems that we are talking about are for the Gambians and we look forward to scaling up this initiative to other municipalities around the country and also continue to promote the smart city approach for the Gambia. Thank you for your attention and thank you for your collaboration. Thank you to the team for the work well done and congratulations, Madam Lord Mayor, for being the pilot for the Gambia for this type of initiative.
It gives me greatest pleasure to address this august gathering today, being one of the happiest days in my life as we clocked yet another milestone and indeed a big achievement. Before now, all we had was an idea about revenue digitalization. Therefore, launching it today is indeed a mighty accomplishment. We could not have done it without the help and support from the UNDP. Today, we gather here in celebration of this wonderful achievement after a long struggle of instruments for ways of increasing our revenue and carrying our key developmental project for Banjul. We salute our developmental partners. Moreover, the UNDP, who is always at the forefront, ready to partner with the Banjul City Council to make us bigger, better, and more efficient as we transform the way council does business under my care. As the capital city, we are more than committed to the transformation of lives and livelihoods of Banjulians and by extension, the people of the Gambia. Today, I am proudly saying that my team and I have brought the dream to collect council taxes and levies digitally and this is no small fist but a huge one. We can only get better from here. We are proud and bearest assured we will develop on the gains of this pilot project and extend it to all streams of councils, revenue generating inlets. We are all well aware that the world is in the realm of technology and we cannot afford to be left behind as a city council, enhancing the many gains that the internet and ICT brings to our present day lives. We're ready for the challenges posed and we are willing to embrace the benefits brought about by ICT and for a start market revenue digitalization. I hereby urge the CEO and Director of Finance to leave no stone unturned in making so that the gains registered today are extended to all council revenue centers. I have no doubt that with the support and cooperation of their respective teams, I am confident that this will be done and you can always count on my good office for support and advice if the need so exists. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I thank my dear sister, Madam Isata Day and her team, not, I underline that, forgetting Cairo Enterprise and Outpost Media, who contributed one way or the other in making this dream come true. Mawaa assalamualaikum. Di gerem nyep, why di gelngi gerba de bi opa? Di koyobosi sumo sistamo Isata Day. Dama wohne, su fe konne wa mar se te hamne liban geringla len anal. Konon teidu hatse bi ten tbe fe. Manglen di wohne, li gerin bo hamnela. Ngeren bo amut apa? Paski Banjul City Council, li mune to ne fehe bede fal ko bo pam, nik da fa seer. Lingene gisni, mo heun fe tai, ai millionu baray baray baray, mo chiduga. Ai wata ni baray baray, mo amprunutok wata neko. Ai ni ni baray baray baray, niotiboka, purmu na gisne li heola. Te nyoni niga hamne, yo ibop iyon bi, di te si, metso ne Banjul amnali, lu ken na ludutsumo sistabi tofi, ni ke wa Isata Day, muneta UNDP, sen resident coordinator bi, fisigambia. Dakte sa mo ta sumo wehe, legeli gini na Rohim Maliklo, sa yu weher ne Senegalai, sa yu weher ne Senegalai. Ahakai nyonyo ma boka, ken na gini to, domi Senegal. Why sa yu ma fugue bun tambi, purlu yobu Banjul chikanam, Isata di nebo de glo. Kon Isata di nebo la, wa di regif. Yo rota halu lorek, sa diganteg man, yangi reta hal, diganteg Gambia ak Senegal. Dakte sa, muna na wohne, sumayone kuti Banjul, capital bina fandau, hara ma wale da li fenin. Why Isata de fu blulu? Sa yu ma fugue bun tambi, dinama de glo, hamna litar UNDP, indi kofi, Gambia purmu ligi. Kon mangi wohne, diganteg Gambia ak Senegal, nen nen nu trai, nu nete bena. Man mi jogi na fi bu yagut, dem kuti palas. Sumalene wohne, nakala Senegalai, takke sendi galibem dam, tarang su sumabo, da fa daus ma yara. Hanakainak, hanakai, Isata di yaimi, di ko di neto la fe la, dumaba imafe. Bin tuka ba mi tofi, dumaba imafe, teres fa imela hamne meyala, tbe Senegal. Da fa taku be de ge, fu ma roomba, gisko su sumabo. Kon damane, su salibreti Isata Day, mu Senegalai, di ko di neto, bi neha hamne moni ka UNDP, sivir Gambia. Den deflu newa, su bo poli salibret, kon Isata di regif. Wana lena wa Banjul, dumalene mou sa wohne, ya langene lete gi sumako. Daragara lumoko te polo ti gara lumoko. Isata mi su da futon, bu fiton, ge de na koneko de fulo dar. Paski dumu do, dumu sa, su de do, rahama ma komu, gisne ne bena. Why da fa def, kulu de fu wahu. Isata de fe ya gati, keni na hamne moyo bu Banjul City Council chikanam. Isata di wa Banjul nu nu le, bu ni amonlu opa di regif, deni la kowa. Isata kunyaka di fa la, kumuna de glo ni de la, ku amra spek la. Kaku ham, akhi domi adamala. Paski man Rohim Maliklo, kunyaka hamne, ku jafe de mal la. Why Isata di mi, Isata di regif. Di wawa mar seni, amgen dan dan bu maga. Li nyoni te ishi yen, yen langi, bulen ken na nyodile na wohna. Li puli na guchendu ti ki la, li puli da fleni, li puli da fleneli. Ya ga na lena wohne, ba mani e be tai, warbu sa ni na len, meyala na nyonabu sean biti. Why kanle fina bu bitika? All my interest priya, hal ken sohla. All my interest si biti ki, all my interest si fingern tok. Kon tok lena jam, dal lena jam, why deni gugan geni de glo, tuti ni ta be aksi ni gekat. Paski li indi ni tai, bo de men Nigeria, dan ko fa feka. Bo de men Senegal, dan ko fa feka. Paski moitak, mar se, mu lele de gera. Moitak tai ko, ami ai millionu baray, buga nyon, dem sa, Isata di, neko neko, neko dima le ma se Banjul. Isata de fa seti da, be rekne, ah wow, sohla de li, sohla de gilele. Moitak, li waray yobu, mar se di chikanam, mumun ko yobu. Paski su fe konne, gunen gen de fei, teguram nyari temer, nyotinyun. Bu nyakale, di duram nyene te temer, moyo nyotinyun. Kon na bu nyep, nyoy kontande, ma si yobu, nyofi ra, te buite de dunyala. Kon lima lena wawa, mar se, li sen jamala. Li du sen safa, li safa, dumu ko indi chisen yen. Lo hamne safa, la dumu ko indi chien. Kon yen tai fu nek, amne nyon bo hamne, di nein tok fele, gisko tok Japan. Ne mar se Banjul, bilabu ga danel, daga ko. Koku diarut sah, moyo ha ma wa bo baray, amna fu mi dam, horre. Hamne kumba biti kambe ni la tolu, warni ko de fa al mor, kinii la tolu, warni ko de fa ni, kinii la mel, warni ko de fa ni le. Legi na glega hamne se jam, lo ta be koi ba. Dinam na nyonyo ti yen, na len, bulen konna bu, beko sean biti gili. Amun bena biti bo hamne, tanka mani meyo, amun bena biti bo hamne, amne interest burgeni kofi. Galakugan len, lo le siyen, no pay. Kun nyon na len, Rohim Maliklo, moni geni, geni se biti gi. Giakni akutsumo di gantem, ken, nyolene, besmo ofis, di ti di gayi, bengel ko ham. Jamona passa, ne fu neka, fu ya wahene, demba, wahene gato, lansalo hoi. Kon lima lena di nyan moy, li sen jam, mo etsi yen. Why dolen komu na hamo gulegi? Paski UNDP sen ligai, du ligai bo hamne, tai so seti li, nyari ati nyudel, purlu indi kobil ma se Banjul. Kon na nyari ati kanam, lene na lene, munna nyon. Diganteg opportunity bi de len wohne, wohon na len ko, te mo mi tamit, amna munti da. Wana lena, la fe la, bu ganyo, purtaf, heksta bon bo bu nonu. Purmu sampa, purka ika ti genie, agiai ka ti viti te bussi. Legi tai di nyan nyugis, nyonyo de danel. Kon momi tamit, su ra fe la di dem, ki amne ti germane, kon ta ti len kowa. Do ne nyunko nyon dasi, amna nyon hamne sa derga, nyonge dem, puru, de fa len, ai nu. Kun ekana glega la, silo lena feka si. Kun ekasi glega la, dumalima wa bugade. Benyo do, se ni ni ligu ga, ni dem, de fa len lo. Kon Isata, amna fu waradem, benen program bu waradem. Te politisi, anbo ko di he wa, so ko di he maik, hamu no pi. Paski ni bu no pera fe. Paski olaf yane, dole gen do, te yeneyo su dole, sakka ma di geni, abna u. Kon di apal en ko, bo len si gi se, safa. Nyolene, ba Banjul City Council, li akli, akli len si gi, du bole. Pur dole se bo pa la. Why na gnu gi ne mo, bulen na bu duru, ba fu ka ya hal len ko. Bulen na bu fu ka ba, diro biya hal len ko. Taranga burai, mo chineka, why dolen ko gisne, genena, le nyari ati kanal en ko dor. Why tai len, munatahou, purlunch ko. Kon benen nyari ati kanam, len len di indi, lolu ya la mo ko hamte Banjul, na kunya kulen wursa. Kenen na len, di gi ni Gambia, dangen di dem, ken du li tiye. Dangen di dem, na di Gambia, ni na di, ken du li tiye. Sune he ya la, yon ne te bi, len nyangira, sohli, mo ka bena, di nyana len te rek, mu di hatak. Santanale, gera mle, paski muna, ote ken du felek. Why di regen, di fe di re di bo amut apa, di len wahan dane, di wahan len di darye benen yon. Ni sumo di gen, bi fu nek, ni sumo sistamo de fa idem, di regenji, assalamualaikum warahmatullah.